I'm going to call a meeting of the Board of Supervisors back to order. We're in the afternoon session. We have two items to take up, appointments to the Library Board of Trustees and also appointments to the Carson City Planning Commission. The first item up on the agenda is the appointment of members of the Library Board of Trustees. Nick, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I understand that there are two openings and that one of the applicants, Daniel Seaton, withdrew, which means there's one applicant for that, and that's Jeremy Hayes, he's one. The other applicant is a reappointment from Diane Solinger. So if the Board wishes what we can do now, since we've got two positions and two applicants, we can take a motion to approve both of them and move on to the Planning Commission. So anybody want to do that?
I'll make a motion.
All right.
See where it goes. I move to appoint Jeremy Hayes to fill an unexpired term that will end June of 2016, and I move to appoint Diane Solinger to fill a term that will expire of June 2019.
Second.
On the motion discussion, Harry, none all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both nay carried unanimous. How was that? Now do we have to, do I have to drag out some more time?
No.
No, ready to go?
You can go right through it.
Let's go. All right. Why don't you take us through the next one then?
Mr. Mayor, the next item is an appointment. We have two vacancies on the Planning Commission. We have three applicants. One will be a phone-in interview. We gave that applicant the time of 2:30. So we can probably take one of the applicants now. It's usually about a 15-minute period of time that it takes per applicant, and then we'll do the phone interview, and then we'll do the final one.
Okay, ready? Who? Yes? Jerry, how are you doing? How are we doing today?
Good afternoon. I'm fine.
All right, that's good. You know, have you been through this process before?
I have.
You know what the drill is, well. So let's just, let me just start off by, I have a couple of questions, and one is just kind of tell us, I know what's in your application, but kind of get going about, you know, why you want to be on the Planning Commission, what your thoughts are, and then my second question to think about is, if an application comes before the Planning Commission, that, say it's for a special use project, and it's special use otherwise complies with the law, but the neighbors don't want it, how do you evaluate that? So I wanted to get there. Oh, did I take your question?
You took my question.
Oh, crap. I'm sorry.
I wrote four this time. I'm ready.
I'm sorry. Well, just answer the first one for me and then answer the second one for her.
You can answer them both.
All right.
Okay. I'll start off with the first question.
Sure.
First of all, I'd like to say that I have been very honored to be a member of the Planning Commission for the last four years. It has been an interesting experience, even though development hasn't been what it was in the past, there have been some interesting projects, and some of the issues have been controversial, to say the least, and I'm looking forward to participating in the future on the Planning Commission, because I think that there will be increased development in the near future. And in answer to the question about why I wish to be on the...
Put it back, yeah?
Yeah. I think that my experience as a professional planner, and having been on a number of boards in the past, I have a, I have good experience for being on a public board, and I understand the challenges of making decisions on public issues that have, can have, have effects on the public, but also are driven by, or controlled by, a set of rules that are written into the code. And balancing those two is a challenge and sometimes pretty difficult to do. And in answer to the question about a special use permit, where the neighbors might not be for it, I think it really is going to weigh on what the, the rules are, how it's, what the code says about a particular use, and whether the applicant is going to be able to comply with the terms and conditions of the code. And while I might feel a strong affinity for, or empathy for what the residents might think or feel about a project, if a project is permitted under the code, and it will comply with all the various conditions of the code, then I don't think that the Planning Commission has a choice other than to approve the permit.
If you could suggest one amendment to the development standards, what would it be?
I am a, I feel very strongly that the parking regulations in Carson City need to be revised. I think that, especially for downtown uses, the requirement that a business provide the same parking that a suburban type of commercial use provides are inappropriate for a downtown neighborhood and for downtown business vitality. And I think that more emphasis should be given to public parking spaces and to on-street parking.
You must have x-ray vision.
What are your questions now?
So, so my question is, that I just came up with, what are your thoughts on issuing parking variances on improved properties that do not currently meet parking requirements versus other potential methods to meet parking?
I'm going to answer that in two ways. First is to address the issue of variances. I personally think that a variance should have, that there should be a very high bar for approving a variance. I think that if an issue is of such importance as parking, for instance, that the regulations should be revised rather than constantly approving variances for that issue. We went through this, and we've gone through it a number of times on the Planning Commission since I've been on it, with regard to parking at schools, and I have suggested that maybe we look at the parking ordinance rather than, or the parking standards, rather than constantly having applicants come in for variances on that.
Okay, I got left here. Okay. What direction do you see the city going, and how does the Planning Commission complement your vision?
I think that Carson City is, in my experience, which granted is somewhat limited, is focusing on its commercial core. It's, I think that, you know, looking at the downtown and the various entry corridors into the downtown is a real opportunity for Carson City to grow, and I would like to see the emphasis on development placed there. I think that because of policies that have been put in place in the past regarding open space acquisition, and that they, that we have done a good job of controlling where the development can grow, and I think that infill residential and infill commercial are appropriate for Carson City at this point.
My question is, recently in downtown, a special use permit was granted to a business owner who then took two public spaces and put in outside dining. Do you think that this should go through the Planning Commission, or should the city have the ability to take parking spaces of public and use it for whatever means they feel is necessary for business owners?
I guess I'd need a little bit more information on, because I don't recall that situation, but I may...
It didn't go through the planning.
Okay.
A special use permit granted, encroachment.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. Well, I think that if the, if the ordinance does not allow, if the, if the development code does not permit that type of use, then I think, I don't think that it's appropriate for the city to allow that use without the appropriate changes to the ordinance. If it were an allowed use, and the city thought it were appropriate to allow the use on a sidewalk, which, or in a parking space, then I think it would, I would have to know more about the situation to be able to answer that.
Thank you.
Okay, well, here's one. What do you think about auctioning off the parking places in front of the legislature? I'm kidding. Paul, anything else you want to say?
I just, I have enjoyed being on the Planning Commission, and I would love to serve another four years.
Well, on behalf of all of us, and on behalf of your community, I want to thank you for your service, and, you know, it's not lost on us, you know, that for a few years when the economy was way down, not much was going on for the Planning Commission, then all of a sudden it comes back, and there's, you know, we're getting the days of yore, where the rooms are getting filled up, and there's a lot of different views and opinions, and, you know, far as I know, you've navigated those waters very well, so...
Thank you.
On behalf of all of us, thank you, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome to, you know, welcome to hang around and see what we do here, so...
Hi. Hey, I can barely hear you.
Here, let me, let me adjust, see if the volume... How about that, Jerry? Can you hear me better?
Hi. You're still very great. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you fine.
Okay. I can just barely hear you, but I get a room without noise, so...
Okay. Well, I'm calling you from the, from the Board of Supervisors meeting. I've got the mayor and the Board of Supervisors here. If I have to relay the question to you, I'll do that, but we can hear you fine. So if this is, if you can hear me well enough to answer questions, that may have to be the way we work it, if that's, if that's okay with you.
Okay. I may have to ask you to repeat him, but...
I will.
Other than that, I guess that's the way we'll have to do it.
Okay. Well, I'm going to turn it over to the mayor, and if you're able to hear him, then we'll just let it go that way, and if not, I will repeat the question for you.
How about this, Jerry? Can you hear, can you hear this? No?
I don't think the candidates are there.
Okay. Nick, just ask him to, one, to, you know, give, talk to us about what he wants to do, be on the Planning Commission, what his thoughts are, what he thinks he can accomplish, and second, the question about what happens if you have a special use permit that is otherwise, meets the criteria of the law, but is opposed by the neighbors?
Okay. Hey... Each board member, there are five of them, is going to ask you two questions. So these first two come from the mayor, and his first question is, if you can tell the Board why you want to be... Sorry, let me turn the microphone here on too. If you can tell the Board why you want to be a member of the Planning Commission, what your thoughts are in terms of development in town, and your general thoughts on, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, what was the last point?
General thoughts on what you can do?
And general thoughts on what you can do as a Planning Commissioner.
Okay. I think I got a bit far of that question, and the first part being, why would I want to be on the Planning Commission? And I've been in the community for a long period of time, and I think this is a time of some possible change, and sort of a major direction for the city, coming up with a lot of the surrounding areas changing a great deal, and kind of changing times for us. So I would like to be a part of the development of that, and I think that I have something to contribute. I've been here for 30 years or so in the community, and my kids have grown up and gone to school here, and I've been involved in the public sector working there, as well as the private sector, developed a business here, and have built several homes here. So I'm committed and invested in the community, and I think I have a good knowledge of the community and how it's grown and developed. I don't have knowledge of the particular kinds of things that are done in the Planning Commission per se, but that's part of my interest, is to become more familiar with that.
Okay. Jerry, the second question from the mayor is, what would you do if a, if an application for a special use permit met the criteria in terms of either city ordinance or statute, but is opposed by the neighbors in the surrounding area?
Okay. Hey, if I understand the question, it's, what would I do if there is a special use permit, and it was consistent with the regulations of the city or state, but it was opposed by the, by residents, I guess residents that it would apply to?
Yes, that's correct.
So I think, you know, it's always important and invaluable to take into account residents' views and how they're thinking about it, and how it impacts them personally, but I think you're also limited, you know, by laws and regulations. You can't create a violation to those, so they would have to accept that. An alternative approach might be to see whether or not it would be acceptable for an appeal, for a modification, but again, you have to look at the rationale behind the regulations or laws that are acceptable, and that may not permit any sort of appeal, and so then you are required to observe those laws and regulations, because they represent, at least hopefully, they represent the, the better good for the more general population.
Jerry, the next questions are going to come from Supervisor Jim Shirk. So I'll, he's going to, he's going to read, he's going to ask the question to me, and then I'll relay it to you, if that's okay.
Did you repeat that? I didn't get the next question.
Remember it?
It's, it's going to come here in a moment, from Supervisor Shirk.
Okay. My question is, the city just recently issued an encroachment permit to a property owner in downtown area, which took, which took two public parking spaces. Are you in favor of this, or do you think there should be a regulation to how this is governed?
Jerry, the question from Supervisor Shirk is this. The city recently issued an encroachment permit for a business owner to take two parking spots that were adjacent to the business for use by the business owner. Do you support that type of authority, or do you think there should be a change to the ordinance?
I think I got part of that question, but I may not actually add a statement of it, something about a reproachment to a parking area, and whether or not there's, you would have to accommodate it in some way. So I don't think I got all the details of that question.
Yeah, Jerry, the question concerned an encroachment permit, that a business owner was given the authority by the city to take two public parking spots for use by that business owner, and do you support that authority, or do you think there should be a change so that is not permissible without going through the Planning Commission and potentially the Board of Supervisors?
Okay, so that is, whether or not they're supporting the city taking public parking places that encroaches in some way on the businesses, and they would, and that the businesses are opposed to that, and that they, whether or not they support the city exercising authority to do that?
No, no, sir. Exactly the opposite. The city gave the business owner the authority to take two public parking spots and convert them into outdoor seating for his restaurant. So do you support that? Do you support the city staff having the authority to do that, or do you think that is more appropriate to go through the Planning Commission?
Okay. Well, I'm not entirely clear on that, but I think that my inclination, based on how I can gather that, is, my inclination would be to consider most strongly the concerns of the businesses that are involved in that, and what their needs are there, as opposed to a public, sort of recreational area, not a recreation, but along those lines. I think I would put the businesses first in that regard, and if there wasn't any sort of legal complications, that's what I would lean to there. I think the businesses are important for our city and for the people in general, so as long as it's not any sort of outrageous demand, that's what I would lean to.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
What direction do you see the city going, and how does the Planning Commission complement your vision?
Jerry, the question is, and it's from Supervisor Lori Bagwell, what direction do you see the city going in, and how do you see the Planning Commission complementing that direction?
In what direction do I see the city going in, and how do I think the Planning Commission can complement that, moving in that direction?
Yes.
Well, I think the direction of the city at this time, I would think, is a little bit uncertain, and I think it's important to start rethinking or revisiting where we might go to. There are some major developments, Tesla obviously being one, but it's going to impact a large area here, and the city of Reno is really increasing its businesses, so that's going to have some impact on us. The composition of the legislature, I think, is a major concern for Carson City, and we haven't seen a lot of effect of that yet, but we have seen some, like the movement of the Department of Education down to Las Vegas. I think these kinds of developments that are relatively recent make our master plan, perhaps at this point, out of date and in need of revisiting. I think the direction of the city that would be desirable would be one where we have an improvement in jobs available in the city that have some substantial or decent wages. I think that the community, the college is another particular point for the community. How the Planning Commission can play a role in all of that, I'm not certain about that in detail, and that's part of my interest in becoming involved in the Planning Commission. Certainly there are zoning kinds of things, and building regulations and things like that that may come into play when you're entertaining the development of a business in the community and their interests, and the same may be true for college. So I think in those kinds of ways, the Planning Commission would play a role. In terms of the overall direction of the city, like purchase of land for open space, where you might create places for residences to be built, things of that, that kind are also part of the Planning Commission, or maybe. I think our desire is to have Carson City preserve its very comfortable environmental setting, but at the same time promote development of the city, because I think that that's going to be essential for the city to grow and for it to remain a vibrant city without experiencing some of the problems that other cities have experienced recently with downturns in the economy, or things like pension problems. So I think that there's a lot of promise, but I think that it's probably going to require some integrated thinking and some consideration of new developments for us.
Okay. Thank you, Jerry.
Okay. My question is...
My question is, what are your thoughts on issuing parking variances on improved properties that do not meet current parking requirements versus looking at other potential methods to meet parking requirements?
Okay, Jerry. The next question comes from Supervisor Bunkowski, and the question is... Say the first part of that again, Brad. Jerry, what are your thoughts on increasing, on issuing parking variances on improved properties that do not meet current planning requirements versus other potential methods to meet parking requirements?
I don't think I got very much of that. I got the what are my thoughts on it, but I didn't get the second, the main part of it.
Sure, sure. I'll read it to you again. What are your thoughts on issuing parking variances on improved properties that do not meet current parking requirements versus other potential methods to meet parking requirements?
Okay. That's about issuing parking variances?
Correct.
I'm not sure what a parking variance would mean.
Well, if, if, if a property owner or a business owner wants to either establish or expand a business, and in this case, we're talking about parking, there is typically a parking requirement that is tied to that type of business. You know, a restaurant has a different parking requirement than a store does. So, some of the, some of the older developments, for example, may not meet current parking requirements, and in that case, a business or a property owner would have to come to the Planning Commission to get a variance, which is basically an exception to not meeting the current requirement. So, that's, that's the whole, that's the whole thought behind the question.
Okay. So, it's a matter of a property owner or someone asking to change the requirements for parking. Is that correct?
Uh, yes.
Okay. And that there would have to be a change in the regulations governing the parking in order to accommodate that?
No, no. The, the own, the property or the business owner would apply via the Planning Commission for a variance. So, what are your thoughts on, should that process continue, meaning the property or the business owner has to go to, down to the city planning department, pay a fee, submit, submit a request for a variance, and again, a variance is an exception to a requirement? So, do you think that procedure should continue, or do you think there is some other way that the city can, can solve those type of problems short of the owner having to come before the Planning Commission?
Um, that's a, that's an interesting and complicated question, I think. Certainly, the first consideration would have to be whether or not there are any sort of legal complications to that that would shape the response of the Planning Commission. And a consideration for alternatives to the parking. Without knowing much about a particular business, I think the particular business would, would make a difference in terms of what possible alternative solutions there may be. If it was a very sizable business, you might look at some way, the city may give them some incentives for their own construction. You would have to look at what kind of impact that would have on the area around their business, whether or not construction would be desirable. You might look at other ways that people might access the business aside from using a card. And again, of course, that depends on the location of the business and the nature of the business, as to whether or not foot traffic, for example, might be accessible to the business, or you might find a way to make foot traffic more accessible. In our community here, we, many places are pretty accessible very quickly, but most of that is accessible by automobile, and probably desirable for that way. Certainly, we could increase our public transportation capabilities that would reduce necessity for parking, individual parking. And the state, of course, I think is still finalizing whether or not something like that Uber company can provide public transportation to people. And the Uber company is actually a pretty valuable form of transportation. I've used that in New York City, and it was excellent, and I know people using it in Los Angeles. So, that's an alternative to taxi cabs, which can be somewhat expensive and not very many here. I don't think large bus transportation like they have in Reno is a viable alternative for Carson City because of its size. Some smaller buses are available for handicap people at this point in time. I'm not sure that creating a bus fleet, even a small one, would be that desirable for our size city. But I think public transportation is a, is a bit of a problem for Carson City, so that's not an extremely viable alternative, at this point anyway, for parking, especially for a business. We may find some novel ways of transportation in the city, but we haven't come up with yet. I don't have one offhand, and certainly things like trolley cars in San Francisco. I'm not suggesting trolley cars would work here, but it's a novel form of transportation.
No, I, I think you've...
So, the manner of the parking does, does lead into a consideration for different forms of transportation within the city. And...
I've gotten a signal that I think you answered the question.
...different forms of transportation might be incorporated desirable for it.
Sure. Thank you. I think that answers the question. We'll now go to Supervisor Aboud.
My question is, if you could suggest one amendment to the development standards, what would it be?
Jerry, the question is, if you could recommend one change to the development standards, what would it be?
One change in development?
To the development standards, what would it be? Yes.
And, and sorry, I've got, I kept, I've got tired of it. What would I, if I were going to recommend one change, what would I recommend? But the subject of the change is not clear to me.
The subject is the development standards. If you could recommend one change, what would it be?
For development?
To the development standards, what would, yes, what would your change be?
For development of Carson City?
No, for the standards that we're specifically talking about, what would the one change be?
It seems like you're asking for a change in the standard for development, and...
Yes.
...I'm not entirely clear about that.
Yes. No, that's it, Jerry.
Pardon me?
That's correct. That's correct.
That's correct?
Yes.
One change in the standard for development?
To the development standards, but yes, go, go ahead. What would your one change?
Well, I'm not, I have to say that I'm not familiar with all of the standards for development or development in the city, but I think if I were looking at a single change that might have the most viable impact or the biggest impact, I would probably look at one of three places. I would look at changing the development of the college into a much bigger part of the city, and how it's funded, including perhaps funding by residents of Carson City. I think that that's a big, can be a major development for Carson City. I would look at the eastern corridor of Carson City, because I think the eastern part of this area, whether you're looking at it from Reno or us, is going to be the area most impacted by the introduction of Tesla, and Carson City, it's important to change our standards, because I think our view of the direction that the changes are coming from are typically north and south, and to some extent, a little bit west. But I think the major impact of changes are going to come from the east at this time, and that's important to look at that. I think another consideration is that the reliance of Carson City on state employees to be a source of income, I think, is something that is important to reconsider, because that's, I believe, is probably going to be diminished gradually over time, and I don't know of a plan in place to replace that source of employment. So, if I understood the question, I think one of those three areas, if I were to select a single change, it would be from one of those three areas. I hope that is responsive to the question.
It is. Thank you, Jerry.
You're welcome.
Jerry, we have one other applicant to interview, but on behalf of all of us here, want to thank you for applying to be on the Planning Commission, and thank you for your interest in Carson City. I know you've been here a long time. We thank you for being, you know, a great citizen and wanting to help out. So, I don't think, we could probably stay on the phone while we do this, but can't do much there, but we want to thank you, Jerry, so, okay?
Jerry, Mayor Crowell wanted to thank you for volunteering for this position, for your interest in serving your community. I will call you back to let you know. We have one more applicant for the board to interview, and I will call you back at this number to let you know what the results are.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, Jerry.
Thank you for hearing me.
Yes. Thank you. And the board says thank you as well.
Elise is here, so...
Hi, I'm well, how are you?
He's got the chair warm.
Great, thank you.
Not that it's not warm outside either, but how you doing?
I'm well, Mayor Crowell, how are you?
Good.
It's nice to see you. Do I have to press any buttons?
Turn that one off there on your right, and then turn the one on in the middle.
Okay.
How's that?
Perfect. Can you guys hear me okay? Oh, I can hear me, I don't like that.
That's good. Elise, I don't think you've been through these processes, have you?
No.
Well, what we do is we all, five of us get to ask a question or two, and then we ask, try to ask the same question so that nobody gets an unfair advantage. Paul S. Wine's back there, he was the first applicant, so they get to listen, otherwise, you know, we don't have people listening, so. And I usually go first and just kind of give you something to get going, and so my question, I have two questions to you. One, tell us a little bit about why you want to do this, what you think you can accomplish, and two, the more substantive question is, if you were faced with an application for a special use permit that otherwise complied with the law, but was opposed by the neighbors, how would you deal with that?
Do you mind if I make notes, just so I don't...
No, go ahead.
Okay. Do you want me to mic on when you speak, please? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's all right. Well, we'll get you for you, Kathy, so...
Okay. So, a little about myself. My name's Elise Monroy, and I have been a resident of Carson City, not a very long time, about two years, but I'm a native Nevadan. I'm actually a fifth-generation Nevadan, which is really exciting. My family has been in Carson City for a long time. My great-grandpa lived over on Arrowhead for years. So, I'm excited to live here. I moved here for work. I work for the state, and, let's see, graduated from the University of Nevada. I'm not, so, I was always really involved in my community in Reno. I was really active in my church, and I'm still on a board of directors for a food pantry in, in Reno, and since I've moved here, I felt like I haven't found a connection to this community yet. I have a great gym, and I've made lots of friends, and I work with great people, but I don't feel like I'm part of this community yet. I don't feel like I'm a resident of Carson City. So, I went on the website to see what types of volunteer opportunities I could find, and there was an opportunity for the Planning Commission or the library, and knowing very little about either, I chose the Planning Commission for the reason that I think that this is a really exciting time to be in planning and development and government and public service in northern Nevada. We're about to see this region and this area change with Tesla, and there's going to have to be some pretty substantial infrastructure improvements and growths, and public, our public servants, our boards of supervisors, our county commissions, our state legislators are going to have to rise to meet that need. And I think that it's important to volunteer for positions like the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission. It's an important service to the community. So, that's a long, kind of rambly answer at why I'm here today, but that's why I'm here today. And I really wasn't actually expecting to get a call back from my application, so I was kind of caught off guard and surprised, but. And then, in regards to the second part of your question, Mayor Crowell, how would I handle the application of a special use permit that was opposed by the neighbors? So, I think, and something I pride myself really well on, is my ability to listen and to listen to understand, and I'm a, I think I'm a really effective communicator. I'm not sure if I'm communicating well right now, but I feel like I'm a pretty effective communicator. And I think that if, I think that if I had to help come to a decision, I would hope I would be in a position to listen to all the concerns of the community and then actually listen for what the issues were. I know that sometimes these, like neighborhood and community issues can get really heated, and people get really passionate about it, but you really have to be able to listen for the actual issue behind the concern, if that makes sense? Okay. So, I guess that's how I would try to handle that, is just try to really listen for what, get down to what the issue around the concern is.
Very good. Thanks, Elise.
Okay.
Naco misses you, by the way.
What was that?
Naco.
Oh, I miss all my Naco folks, too.
Okay. All right. Who wants to go next? Brad, go.
Hi, Elise.
Hi.
My question is, what are your thoughts on issuing parking variances on improved properties?
Okay.
That do not meet current... -that do not meet current parking requirements?
Okay.
Versus looking at other potential methods to meet the current requirements?
So which, which one would I, which, so would I, would I deny the variance if it didn't meet the current?
Let me, let me expand on it. I'll give you an, an example. Uh, you have an older property, um, that at the time it was built, uh, had a different parking requirement than today's standards. A business wants to either purchase or lease that property, but their use doesn't meet the current parking requirements.
Okay.
So in that particular case, the current procedure is that they would come into, uh, the city and they would submit an application for a parking variance to waive the additional parking requirements. So my question to you is, do you think that that is a good method to handle parking requirements, or do you think that there may be other ways or methods to look at that?
I always think there's multiple ways to look at an issue, so I guess I would have to go with the second one. I, I, um, right? I mean, yeah, I, I think that there, there'd have to be multiple ways to look at an issue.
There's no right or wrong answer, just your thoughts.
Okay, well, I, I guess I would, I guess I would, I would look, I would look to see what granting the variance, how that would affect, um, properties or areas around there, and then, um, if there was going to be an impact by granting the variance, I would want to see what other, um, what other solutions there are. Maybe I'm an optimist, I always think there's solutions, so, yeah.
Hi.
Hi.
My question is, if you could suggest one change to the development standards, what would it be?
So, not knowing anything about the Carson City development standards, um, I'm guessing that's essentially the, the plan that the city looks at. Okay, so, as a, a pretty fresh resident to Carson City, there have been a few observations I've made. One of my observations, um, is regarding the crosswalks, but that seems to be a pretty hot bu, button issue, the crosswalks, I'm not going to touch that, but another thing that I've noticed is there are a lot of thrift at secondhand stores in Carson City. In the, um, the, the complex that I work out in, there's three in the one area. Not that there's anything wrong with thrift or secondhand stores, I frequent thrift in secondhand stores, but they're not usually, um, at least like the fronts of them are not usually well-maintained, they don't look very nice. So I would, that's probably one of the things that I would suggest is, I don't know how you, how you limit that, but maybe a certain, um, number of these types of businesses per area, per, per ward, I'm not sure how you do that, but that would, that's, those are the two observations I've made, but the, the thrift store one, it's one that's kind of stuck with me. Okay.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Recently, the city issued an encroach, an encroachment permit to a business owner or property owner within the downtown area, which took two parking, public parking spaces so they could utilize it for their business. What is your position, or do you think this is right for the ma, uh, for the city to do, or should it go through the Planning Commission to take away public access and parking?
I would probably say it should have gone to the Planning Commission first, just to vet the taking of the parking spot. One of the, um, I told a friend of mine that I was applying, um, for this, and I had the interview today, and, um, she, we were talking about the downtown redevelopment, which is really exciting, and, um, she said that she avoids downtown at all costs at this point because of the crosswalks and a lot of reasons, but one of the issues was parking, that it's hard to park. That's not my experience, I live in that area, I work in that area, I find it pretty easy to find a spot, um, and it's incredibly walkable, too, but I digress. I think that it should have been, but to go back to your point Supervisor Shirk, I think that, um, that decision probably should have been, um, vetted at the, the, the Planning Commission level, just because parking downtown seems to be like a kind of controversial issue, hot button, and at least you can say that, um, it, it went through multiple, multiple, multiple eyes, if you will, so. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
What direction do you see the city going and how does the Planning Commission complement your vision?
Well, um, like I said in my introduction, I think that, um, this is a really exciting time to be in northern Nevada, and, um, I don't know if the growth we're going to see is, um, going to be unprecedented, but it will absolutely be, um, historic, and, um, a lot of that growth is going to, um, to hit Reno, but we will see growth in Carson City, and, um, I'm excited to see where that goes. I don't know what direction Carson City is going in, but I hope it's one that is willing to be, um, I, I, I hesitate to use this word because I don't think it represents, um, represents me, but I think that I'd like to see the Carson City move in a direction that's progressive in, in how we grow and how we expand, um, to meet the needs of the, the area, so. I would not say that I am a progressive person, but, yeah, okay, thank you.
We're getting interested, we've got some time or so.
Okay, of course.
I don't normally do this, but I do have a follow-up question for you because I think that you present us with a unique situation. You are extremely well-spoken, extremely intelligent, but know very, very little about the position or the, um, the statutes that you're going to have to uphold. So give us an idea of what you're going to do if we appoint you to get up to speed so that when you show up at the first meeting, that you are making the appropriate decisions based on law.
Absolutely, that is a really good question, and, um, I, so, my, my job, I'm a policy analyst, and, um, I have, I've only been in this position for about four months, but I have had to come up to speed on some pretty substantial, complex issues really quickly. Um, I came into the position I'm in, um, in the middle of legislative session, and in a matter of, um, of days, I found myself writing legislation on issues I knew nothing about. So, um, I, I think that it's, um, a task I could absolutely, um, accomplish, if you're asking how I would do that, I would, um, probably, um, rely on the Planning Department to help, um, provide me with the information I'd need, the most pertinent information I need to come up to speed quickly, um, but I think that I could handle coming up to speed. I don't know if that helps, but.
Anybody else have a second? Elise, uh-
Okay.
On behalf of all of us up here, thanks, thanks for putting your name in the hat and applying, and thanks for, you know, wanting to make sure that our community moves forward in the right way, and sometimes people have different views about how that is, but, you know, your enthusiasm and optimism is appreciated, and, and, uh, you go far, you already going far, so.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Kroll, and I have to say, um, if, if I can, I'm, um, really grateful for the opportunity to, um, be here and speak with you today, and, um, even if this isn't the best fit, there might be other fits at Carson City for me in a volunteer capacity, so, um, if it's appropriate for me to ask, if this isn't a good fit for me, for maybe I could be kept in mind for other things, so.
I absolutely can.
Okay, okay, awesome.
We'll see where it goes, you're welcome, welcome to listen to us here, so.
Okay.
Okay?
Great, thank you, guys.
All right, Elise, thanks. Go first.
Go. All right, um, well, I, I think that Paul is a no-brainer. I've seen him in action there, I think he's a valuable member of the Planning Commission, uh, so my top choice is Paul. With the commitment from Elise that she, uh, put the effort in to get up to speed prior to her first meeting, then, uh, my second position would go to Elise, based on that commitment.
I would echo the same sentiment and for the same reasons.
Me, too.
It's four. Mr. Irrelevant. Well, I can tell you that I know Elise, and I can tell you when she tells you she's going to get up to speed, she'll get up to speed, so, I mean, I don't have any doubt in my mind about that, and, and she works for a guy who, who's going to require that you toe the line, so, all right, we'll entertain a motion to nominate or appoint, um, Paul and Elise.
I move to, excuse me, I move to appoint Paul Esquine and Elise Monroy to the Planning, Carson City Planning Commission for a term that expires in June 2019.
On the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried, unanimous, thanks, do well. Paul, make sure you take her under your wing, okay? All right. All right, we have anything else to come before the board? Anything? Are we ready to adjourn? Unless there's- Huh? Oh, I got concluding public comment. Adriana, I beat you to it, you were looking at me. Anybody, public com- Okay, I don't see any public comments, so unless, uh, there's an objection, we're adjourned.